And the Route 9 revenue, is that going away because the state's taken over?
Yeah, because we won't be getting any money from the state.
And so we won't be maintaining it, right?
Well, we're maintaining it, but some of that fee comes out of the UREP program here. And there was another one.
So why is the other one going away?
This is revenue that I think was for the project that we were working on currently, the fifteen thousand.
Which project is that?
The state road, the construction part. I don't think they give you fifteen thousand for it. That's all, my understanding, it's all in the UREP program for your road maintenance. I don't think it's pulled out separately. I can double check that, but I'll put a zero in that. I'll double check it, but I don't expect to see any funding for that.
I think they were paying us something to maintain it, so I think they've given us some money for it, so I don't know if that's...
Well, like I said, all that usually comes into this program. Any road maintenance for winter maintenance is done through that. And again, we can make adjustments if we have to. But right now, we're one hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand under what we had last year. Most of that is obviously through the revenue sharing and a few other areas. Any questions on that?
And so these are, you're keeping these numbers the same based on what you saw from the current returns so far this year?
That's correct.
I just have a question on the park cabin rental. Is that where Verla lives, or is that...
That's where Verla lives and pays rent.
Okay.
And that actually went up last year, so...
Any questions on revenue projections? And so these are the numbers that you've used to bake into...
The tax calculation, right. I'll show you that. If nobody has any questions, we'll go into how we do the tax calculation sheet. This is from the State Revenue Department. This is a calculation sheet that the assessor will use when he goes to commit taxes. This is your total taxable valuation as what we used last year to figure our tax rate. And this was the personal property valuation, dollars, thirty-eight million, which gave us a total of three hundred and sixty-seven million and some change. These numbers all fit into what the total exemption valuation is, what that is in dollars that are coming in. We're only getting...
So the line four is the homestead exemption...
Homestead total, total value, yes.
Now, didn't they drop that this year to ten-five?
Yes, they did, yeah.
So we would have to adjust that number?
I had to adjust that then, yeah. This was off last year.
And then that, so that six thousand, or six billion, or whatever it is...
Six million.
Would be adjusted as well, right?
That's correct.
Because we're only getting currently fifty-six percent of that, right?
Fifty-six percent, yeah. Okay, these are reimbursements from the Betty program. People who claim their personal property, they apply and get reimbursement. So these are values that we calculate and gives you a total valuation assessment of three hundred and seventy-seven million. So that's the, actually the three sixty-seven is what we used when we calculated the tax rate. But these are all the expense sides of the assessment. Our county tax for this year is broken out. It's usually, when you're looking at it, it's usually right in your expense lines. So we subtract that and that gives us what we currently have been looking at is a six million, three sixty-one, two fifty-six for...
That's our municipal budget less the county tax.
Less the county tax, that's correct. And then there's a reimbursement, TIF financing plan that we get as a revenue, and that will adjust, that will change based on the tax rate and where they are in the TIF program.
That's what we pay out, right?
Yes, that's what we pay out.
Pay out for the TIFs that we have.
Depending upon what the TIF is, but... And this is the school number. After all, their subsidies are subtracted. This is what we have to raise for schools. Okay? And then this will be your total assess...
That's our total expenses for the...
That's our total expense line.
...for the next fiscal year.
Yeah. Okay. And then this will be our revenue side. Once again, we subtract the revenue sharing, I'll put it on a separate line, and then all the other revenues will add up to what we had, which is two million, five ninety-three, six-ten. So that's the total number of deductions that you'll subtract from this to give you what you need to raise for local property tax. That's ten million, okay? And what they do is they give you guidelines that you have to follow, your maximum allowable tax based on what you need to raise is times one point oh-four, oh-five, it gives you this is what the maximum you can raise. And then they let you calculate a minimum tax and a maximum tax. So the minimum tax would be twenty-six, sixty-two, and your maximum would be twenty-seven, ninety-five.
So the three seventy-seven is the current valuation?
Yes. Yeah, that comes from this number here, okay?
Okay. And that gets divided by the amount that we need to raise to determine the percentage?
Right, yeah. And then they use, they back out the homesteads and they use the three sixty-seven, six fifty-one, and you select your tax rate that you'd like to try to set. Here, I chose twenty-six, sixty-five, and it gives us, but twenty-six, sixty-five plus, that gives you an overlay of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, three fifty-two, okay?
So the, so if you look at line eighteen, all right, the three sixty-seven is what we need to, is our adjusted valuation?
Right, that's the adjusted valuation.
And then if you times it, if we take that tax rate, and then, so that gets you nine million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand in what needs to be raised for taxes?
Yep, plus, then you add in your overlay, and that will give you what you need to raise, which is a ten. Now, just to show you if you were to reduce this amount, okay, you can go back to your twenty-five, fifty, which is where we are today. You're still, you're raising enough money, but your overlay gets reduced to eighty-six thousand.
Don't you have to reduce the bottom one?
Yeah, you do. Makes it even smaller. So, let's go up. So that's one of the numbers that we'll make adjustments. Now, we talked about valuation, okay, and seeing an increase. We are currently at fifty-six percent. Now, I'm going to change your real estate and your personal property tax and bump it up twenty percent, and you can see what will happen. Oh, I missed a number here, hold on.
Good, I like that number better. That was way more than twenty percent.
Yeah, slightly. Twenty percent or something, but yeah. And then this one would be, what is that, forty-six, three eighty-eight?
Now, why would you change that one?
Because that will also go up, to fifty, to seventy-six percent as well.
Oh, okay.
They both have to.
All right.
This is not adding any new value, it's just increasing the percentage. So you're, if you have additional...
That's just saying that the land valuation goes through and it increases us from fifty-six to seventy-six percent?
That's correct.
Without any, anybody who's put in addition or any of that other type of stuff?
Right.
It's just straight, flat increase?
Just increasing it, the valuation numbers. So that shifts you to quite a bit, okay? So let's see what that does. We're still working with the same expense line, and we're still working with the same revenue amounts. Nothing's changed there, okay? And you can see the minimum tax rate would be twenty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. The maximum tax rate would be twenty-three, forty-one, okay? And that gives you...
You have to go change those percentages now, right? What you had set for your new tax rate?
No, that, well, the tax rates now get changed, yeah. So let's see, tax for commitment. So now we're gonna change it to, let's just say, twenty-two, fifty, just for, yeah.
You might need a zero in front of that.
I need a zero there. So the tax rate would drop down to twenty-two, fifty, that gives us a fairly healthy two sixty-nine for an overlay. Well, I gotta change that now, I'll drop it a bit, you're right. Gives you two twenty-eight. So, let's go up. So that's one of the numbers that we'll make adjustments. Now, we talked about valuation, okay, and seeing an increase. We are currently at fifty-six percent. Now, I'm going to change your real estate and your personal property tax and bump it up twenty percent, and you can see what will happen. Oh, I missed a number here, hold on.
Good, I like that number better. That was way more than twenty percent.
Yeah.
Slightly.
Twenty percent or something, but, yeah.
And then this one would be, what is that, forty-six, three-eight-eight?
Now, why would you change that one?
Because that will also go up, the fifty to seventy-six percent as well.
Oh, okay.
They both have to.
All right.
This is not adding any new value, it's just increasing the percentage. So you're, if you have additional.
That's just saying that the land valuation goes through and it increases us from fifty-six to seventy-six percent?
That's correct.
Without any, anybody who's put in an addition or any of that other type of stuff?
Right.
It's just straight, flat increase.
It's just about, just increasing it, the valuation numbers. So that shifts you to quite a bit, okay? So let's see what that does. We're still working with the same expense line, and we're still working with the same revenue amounts. Nothing's changed there, okay? And you can see the minimum tax rate would be twenty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. The maximum tax rate would be twenty-three, forty-one, okay? And that gives you.
Oh, you have to go change those percentages now, right? What you had set for your new tax rate?
No, that, well, the tax rates now get changed, yep. So let's see, tax for commitment. So now we're gonna change it to, let's just say, twenty-two, fifty, just for, yep.
You might need a zero in front of that.
So the tax rate would drop down to twenty-two, fifty. Gives us a fairly healthy two-sixty-nine for an overlay. Well, I gotta change that now, I'll drop it a bit, you're right. Gives you two-twenty-eight. So that's what a twenty percent increase from fifty-six percent to seventy-six percent in valuation will do, okay? Done.
If the land valuation goes up, won't the homestead reimbursement increase as well?
Yep.
Will we get more?
Yep.
And I have a question on the TIFs. How many properties have TIFs now, businesses?
I couldn't, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Now, how does that work? They get reimbursed on, they get a tax bill, but then they get reimbursed. Now, is that a decreasing figure or an increasing?
It's a decreasing figure for the town.
The decreasing?
For, or for the taxpayer. They pay, they get reimbursed less money each year.
Okay. Now, what is the term for the tax, for the TIF, the reimbursement?
Depends on the amount of money. It depends on what the council.
It's all different.
At the time, agreed to, could be ten years, could be twenty years, could be fifteen years. Typically, it's in that time range, so. I think most of them are close to twenty years.
Oh, yeah, some of them. So, if we were to leave it at twenty percent, and decide that we want to add in less surplus, okay, less of our surplus. So we go down, and let's, sure, let's take out, let's take out three-hundred.
You gotta change it, you gotta change.
This number.
Oh, from your revenue.
Yeah. So if I take two-hundred thousand out, for instance, make it six, that changes, so we don't go into the surplus to take as, out as much money. We leave it only on a hundred thousand, and that shifts it all to the maximum.
One-fifties, so you're gonna overlay a one-fifty-six?
So we, so the maximum would be twenty-two, say, seventy, or minimum twenty-two, seventy-four, maximum being twenty-three, eighty-seven. And that brings your overlay back up to about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So you can see how the numbers can change. The biggest impact is gonna be land valuation, and hopefully, you know, we'll be up to seventy-six, seventy-five percent, seventy-six percent or higher. But, so that's.
Can you change, can you change line, item number four? Change that to ten million, five hundred?
You wanna change it to ten million, five hundred?
Ten million, five hundred thousand, right? Because I think that's what they adjusted it to, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's, right, but that's.
Let's just.
It's thirteen million there for thirteen thousand.
Yeah, so.
And then your six, the, your sixty-nine, fifty-four is what percent of, was that a fifty-six percent of the old number? Is that a, put your, put it right there, okay? So that's not a calculation, so.
No, it's not a calculation.
That means you gotta adjust those numbers as well.
Yeah.
You should adjust that to be whatever, so, seventy-six percent of the ten-five is. Just do it right in the cell. Say equals.
Get rid of this number?
Yeah, get rid of that number, and say equals, and then click on the cell above the ten-five. Click on the ten-five, and then say, divided by.
Slash.
Right, and that would be, what, seventy-six percent? No, times seventy-six percent, I'm sorry, times seventy-six percent. Times point seven-six.
Times, hold on.
Shift eight. And then you need to change the next cell to equal, right, because that's also fifty-six percent. What's that number at?
That's at fifty-six percent.
Oh, no, that's the better number, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that doesn't change, right?
That doesn't change.
Okay. Well, how does that impact? So what's your minimum now?
Minimum now is twenty-two, sixty-eight, max is twenty-three, eighty-two. So we still stay at twenty-three, fifty. Puts us around two-forty-nine.
And so that takes our surplus from, should the evaluation go up twenty percent, you can take the surplus down by two-hundred thousand.
Two-hundred thousand.
Which means we're using a hundred and fifty?
A hundred or a hundred and fifty?
Right.
Yep. And that's, that would be the ideal, ideal thing to do, if, and I, and I'm assured that we're gonna see a minimum of seventy-six percent.
Now, how does that work, Steve? When we vote on the budget, if we vote on the budget and, well, it's a, it's a revenue number, so I guess it doesn't matter, we're voting on the expenses.
You're voting on the expense, and, and like I've been saying, even if it goes up.
But you're bringing down the expenses based on that revenue.
Excuse me?
So you're bringing down our expense costs based on that revenue, right?
Right.
So you're saying that our, our expense budget is, you know, this, it's six-point-nine million?
That stays the same.
Yeah, that stays the same.
That doesn't have any account for the surplus in it?
No, that just, the only, the only thing the revenue does is basic.
Doesn't have anything for the surplus.
What your surplus or what your tax rate's gonna be. So, the tax rate will go down, but like I've been saying, you still have to raise the same amount of dollars. And, and the whole point behind the adjustments in the land values is that it distributes it more fairly. So it's more equitable for some, so some people's tax rate may go, you know, their taxes may go down, somebody's is gonna go up, and somebody's will stay the same.
But what, our county tax will change though, right?
What's that now?
Our county tax will change, though, some.
No, county tax is set. County tax is set for the year.
Yep.
But we'll see that in the future, then, based on a higher valuation?
Right, next year, because that will go to the state.
They base it on the state valuation.
Because they use the state evaluations. So we have to do our valuation and then submit that to the state. The state accepts it, and then it becomes a, on record. And so then when the county look for it, which could be one to two years after, actually, right? Before it actually benefits it on a county tax side.
As long as they don't make us pay up. We supplied to the state about four or five pages of numbers. It includes some of this, but even more, so it's a long sheet of information, okay? Everybody understand how that works, and, so, the goal would be this scenario here.
And that actually allows us to bring the mill rate down about three dollars, right?
Yep, two.
Two dollars, I mean, from twenty-five to twenty-three.
Yep.
Fifty.
And not tap into our.
Not tap as much into surplus.
Surplus, yeah.
Which was a concern in our last discussion.
Yep, okay, all right.
But we really don't know this.
You won't know this until.
See to this, if you don't know this until closer to August.
We get ready for your taxes in August.
Right.
And that's when all the, all the numbers are in the system, and everything's updated, and that, these numbers don't include any new additional funding for new houses, or porches, or garages, or any of the additional personal property that we might pick up. That's an unknown at this point, whether we're gonna use that or not, okay? And before we commit, it comes back to you to look at, and then we decide. And then Pat will do the commitment.
So any other questions on this portion? Everybody has a basic understanding and.
It's still hypothetical numbers, though.
Well, they're gonna be hypothetical until August. I mean, I think they're maybe somewhat within reason based on what we've seen in the past and what the people that are working the revale have experienced.
Yep.
But I mean, even if it was a ten percent increase, I mean, I don't, you could do a ten percent example, just to see if you gained that much. How much does ten percent do? Take your.
The number's right here.
Is that the right number?
Six-one, six-nine-eight.
Oh, yeah, okay, because we were adjusted to three-sixty-seven.
That's the ten percent.
Oh, everything else being equal.
Yeah, everything else being equal.
And you go down, and what's the maximum, minimum tax rate?
Okay, the maximum.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four, sixty-eight, or twenty-five, ninety-one.
So if you made it twenty-four, sixty-eight.
So let's make it twenty-four, fifty. If it only grows ten percent.
Now, you gotta change your homestead calculation, right? So the times point seven-six would be times point six-six. So back on, what is it, line four? There's some points right there, the next line down, that one, should be point six-six. That stays, all, the rest of that stays the same. So that would give you, change it by about a thousand dollars or so.
Yeah. On the land valuation, how is he coming? Is he forty, fifty, sixty percent done? Does he, does he anticipate having it all completed by August twenty?
Yeah, he, we expect to have the land valuation all done before we commit taxes. And I would say he's probably a little bit more than fifty percent.
And that land valuation is the only thing that will be impacted on our taxes, not the buildings or improvement?
Well, there'll be new buildings added in, and so there'll be adjustments there.
It'll only be for new growth. It won't be for any type of reevaluation of existing things. It'll only be new growth. People that took out permits to build an addition, or, you know, somebody built a brand-new building in town, or something like that since last year, those types of things, will what be, will be the added growth.
Okay, any questions on this? Okay.
Okay. All right, so our next activity was to discuss items within the budget that we wanted to potentially see changed, and see if council wants to go forward and do that. So with that, I'll open it up to council.
Where do we begin? Um, do you want me to start?
Sure, whoever's got thoughts or ideas, or whatever they want.
I had the opportunity this weekend, went to a graduation, and I got hammered by quite a few people. They wanna know what's going on. They're very upset about this, school, obviously, and they wanna know why it is they have such a big police department in the town of Lisbon. And they wanna know what they can do to cut it. They said, "We, we asked you, and we voted for you to cut the police budget, and it doesn't change. What can we do?" I tell them, "I'm only one vote. You don't like the way the votes turn out, watch the councils and make changes in the fall." But I believe that we can cut the police budget at least, at least, by a couple hundred thousand dollars and help out Public Works a little bit more and Transfer Station.
So what are your recommendations?
I'm recommending we take two-hundred thousand out of the police department.
No, I don't wanna hear just a number. I wanna know, where are we taking it from? What line items have you looked at that were the justification?
If we're gonna take a number out of the police department, then we're gonna allow the police chief to go through and keep where he feels the money would be best spent. But wherever he's gonna get the most bang for the buck.
I'm not gonna agree to just a number, not without any logic behind it.
But we'll do it to the school, but we can't do it to the police department?
We have, we have no say in the school. We have no right to say it in the school, right? Whenever we've made a recommendation to the school on what we think that, we've always given our opinion as a council where we think it should come from. I'm, I personally, as a council, am not gonna entertain just a number to say, "Go take out of somebody's budget," whether it's Public Works, fire, police, library, whoever, right? I want some logic behind it that justifies where we think we can make.
The RSOs in the schools, I do not believe that we, at this time, can afford to do stuff like this, Mike. We have got to try to cut money where it was desperately needed.
The school kept the RSOs.
The school funded, the funding comes out of the police department.
No, it doesn't. The funding comes from the school. Seventy-five, if not a hundred percent now. I know when it was, it's seventy-five percent of all RSOs are funded by the school department, because they spend almost seventy-five percent of the year in the school. The school budget has seventy-five percent of the budget. We have twenty-five percent for our two or three, two RSOs. That's all that's in our budget. Twenty-five percent of their salary. I'm just telling you what's in the budget, Roger.
I understand, Mike, what you're saying.
So, I mean, if the, if the school budget gets voted down, then there's an opportunity to do something there, because although we can't say for them to take out the SROs, we can say a number, and they can elect to take out what they want, right? Because we don't have that level of say in their budget. So, I mean, if you wanna take out two-hundred thousand dollars out of the police budget, I wanna understand where and what avenues you're taking it out of.
The problem that I have is that we have cut our Public Works to a point where I don't believe that they can function properly.
What did we cut out of Public Works?
Well, how many positions have we lost?
We're down one person.
Two persons.
Buttons, is there in the audience?
Two.
One through retirement. Roger, and who's the other one?
Gilbert.
But that was last year.
Gilbert was last year.
Yeah.
I mean, we're just not, we're not replacing those positions. I mean, we.
We're doing that with all departments.
We're doing, we've done that with all departments. I mean, the police department has somebody that's out, we're not replacing that one.
Library.
There's, there was, there's what, five or six positions or whatever?
Yep, four full-time positions that we are not filling.
Replacing across all their departments, based on their retirement. I mean, it's just an attrition thing, and it's something we've said we weren't gonna do. I don't know that we, I don't believe the council has picked on the Public Works Department to say, "Cut your budget." I think we've been very supportive of the Public Works Department over the years, and where they're at.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
It's about the police budget. One of the lines that I was curious about is that we budgeted thirty-six thousand for gas, only twenty-two thousand, seven hundred had been expended. And I asked the question a few weeks ago, whether or not there was some more expenses that were gonna hit that line to make it more in line with the budget. And I was told there wouldn't be a significant amount hitting that line, so why are we still budgeting thirty-six thousand when only twenty?
Well, the price has gone up. We, we, last, this current budget year, we budgeted, I think it was like two-nineteen, I can't remember. But it, it's gone up, so what you see for an increase is not, this is there, increase in gallons, but increase in, in cost of fuel.
Per gallon.
Cost per. Cost per gallon. And you'll see that throughout everybody's budget for use of gas.
And then repairs and maintenance. There's the buildings line for a year-to-date expenditure. Now, keep in mind, this is as of May eighteenth, when we got the last printout, but Buildings was fifty-five hundred, we budgeted for eighty-five hundred, and Equipment was fifty-four hundred, we budgeted for ninety-five hundred, and we're going forward with the same amount. So I was just wondering if somebody could speak to not expending the whole amounts in those budget lines here-to-date.
Chief, we'll have to address that if you...
Well, I was wondering if, um, and I... Names have escaped me.
Trying to say, you're drawing a blank?
Jessica, do you have the latest expenditure budgets here-to-date?
I will have it for next week.
I mean, do you have one through the end of, like, last week or whatever?
Not that I've reviewed to, to speak on, for you to read right now.
Just keep in mind that those are fancy works for those particular sublines, but one of those is repairs that are done by outside vendors, and the other one is parts that Public Works buys to do repairs in-house, and back-to-back lines. They're both maintenance lines.
Okay.
Maintenance parts, labor, parts.
Are the, were all of it, when did we replace the?
We didn't have any buildings. PD doesn't have any.
Right, no, I just, I know that's the title.
It's kinda deceiving, but yeah.
When did the, when did you replace the transmissions?
Those were last year.
Those were, yeah.
Last year. We didn't have any this year?
No.
Not yet.
Somebody better knock on wood. So is it fair to say that those budgets will be fully expended, though?
Last year, we had, as the council last year, we had a terrible maintenance year.
Right.
This year, knock on wood, we've been very fortunate with maintenance, so, and it just, it's a year-to-year thing?
Yeah.
These cars, if one of these cars gets another year too old, we're gonna see that maintenance go back to what we experienced last year, so it's cycles. And the same thing on the fuel line. I believe we budgeted, every department last year, we budgeted the same dollar amount.
Yeah.
Two sixty-five a gallon, projecting what gas prices would do, and I don't believe our...
No, two seventy-nine.
Oh, two seventy-nine, okay, so now it's over that. But most of the fiscal year, we've been under that.
Under that, right.
That particular line is showing excess right now.
Okay.
And that line is strictly gas and oil, that's it.
Do you have a question, Doc?
Yeah, on the mileage, in the police department, you've set aside nine hundred dollars and cost eight hundred fifty. Is that for use of their personal vehicles?
That, I believe that's mileage going back and forth to either classes or training or stuff like that.
Their personal vehicles?
Yeah, and they're using their personal vehicles. We don't pay mileage if they're using a cruiser, because that's a town vehicle.
That, that line also pays tolls, parking garage fees. We go to, we go to Portland now, you can't park in Portland free, and everything's parking garages.
Okay.
So that subline is used for mileage, tolls, parking garage fees.
That line's not excessive.
We didn't pay for parking garage fees.
Yeah. I was gonna say, I get that in two months for my travel to work, so it's not excessive.
So, I mean, Roger and...
No, it's not a problem. The voters will, we'll have to let the voters do it.
Any other areas in the budget where the council thinks they wanna make changes or adjustments?
I have a problem with the, the way we're budgeting our supplies for winter of Public Works. The, we always budget consistently under what we are actually spending by a pretty significant amount there. The fuel, what we, what we spent last year is a hundred and twenty thousand, and we budget sixty-nine thousand, and that's been an ongoing process. We know that's not what we're actually spending, but yet we budgeted that. And I don't think, I know the law allows you to do that.
Right, yeah.
What certainly, the way I read the law is that it's intended to allow you to not have to stop in the middle of the winter plowing the road to run out of money, but it's not intended to be a carry-forward every year, you know, budgeting sixty thousand under what you're actually spending, and you know that's not an accurate figure.
I mean, we can, we can increase that number. I mean, I guess kinda the way I've looked at it over the years, knowing that we can overexpend it, is if it's the lesser number, right, it's a, it's a lesser impact on the citizens, right, because it doesn't increase our expenditures as much. And I think it forces the department heads and the town manager to make sure they're managing exactly what they're doing, right? If we put a three or a four hundred thousand dollar number in there, based on what we spent over the past three or four years, just based on storm history or whatever, right, not only does that impact the tax rate, but at the same time, it's, you know, there won't, there wouldn't be as close management as do I really, can I schedule people differently? Can I do things, right, to try and minimize any additional expenditures than what I need to?
I mean, my problem is just, we're still taking the money out of the account. It's getting spent, it just makes the, you know, we're...
Well, at the end of the day, we have to take it out of surplus to cover that.
I think we'd be a lot better off to, you know, budget something closer to what we're actually spending. You can lowball a little bit, but you know, if it was a hundred thousand, I'd be a lot more comfortable than it. You know, we spent a hundred and thirty the year before, and this year was real light, and next year probably won't be as light as last year, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a...
It's just it's so far under there that seems...
It's one of those crystal ball things, right? What do you, what do you wanna put in for a number?
I'd, I'd put a hundred thousand in there.
And the hundred thousand on which line?
On, okay, I'm looking at the, the actual breakdown sheet in the book here, so.
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah, raise that by thirty thousand on winter Public Works.
So you take the hundred and forty thousand total?
Yeah, and I'd increase that to a hundred and seventy, just to be a little closer to what we're actually spending there. If we save the money, hey, it's good, but you know, if we don't, we're just not pulling more out of the, you know, budget that we're actually doing.
Just, if, does, I know in the past, some of the monies that's balanced that off is actually money we've got for FEMA, not FEMA, but for...
Well, if you get, uh, some types of emergencies or whatever, which eventually can come from FEMA or whatever.
I believe there was like a twenty, thirty thousand dollar figure a couple years back when we had a pretty bad winter. Do they base that all, at all, on our, on our budgets if we have gone over budget? I mean, is it based on numbers, or is it strictly based on hours and man-hours?
Training hours, equipment hours, it's...
To do the fix, to repair it.
Actual cost.
Actual cost, okay. I was just concerned. I didn't, I wanted to make sure that the numbers that we budgeted did affect, exactly.
That's what we're getting, right.
So we're gonna bring that bottom number up to a hundred and seventy thousand? Is that what you're saying?
Is that, if council wants to do that? I don't wanna do it, but I mean, that's... But if council wants to do that, that's fine.
You can do it on the fifteenth, you can make that adjustment.
This is the fifty-three eighty-five line?
I don't know. I think you're...
He wants to basically move...
It's page twenty-seven in the book, right?
Uh, yes, page twenty-seven of the book.
Fifty-three eighty-five line?
Well, we do that.
Well, he's doing it to the bottom line. I don't know where you actually want it mixed.
Well, if you're gonna bump it...
The only question I have is, Steve...
You'd wanna bump it in the, in the Supplies Other, that's where the salt and sand costs come, and that's where we usually overdraw it. If you, and then we could put some of it in the overtime. I mean, that's, if you have a lot of storms, that's where the money gets...
Were you looking at the Contracted Services, Mark?
Um, the one I have, you can see right there, right up there. That's what I have from the budget book.
Yeah, so you were looking at Contracted Services being negative and Supplies Other being a hundred and twenty year-to-date, and we only budgeted sixty-nine?
We know we haven't spent sixty-nine in thirty years, so.
So Contracted Services...
And so you would make that a melt-what?
Contracted Services was the side block, right? That's where that expense line...
It's still below what we're thinking, but it's a little bit more ballpark figure.
So Supply is Other, you wanna take from sixty-nine to one twenty-nine. Said you wanted to add thirty thousand?
Well, that would make it ninety-nine.
Bring it up to a hundred thousand.
I mean, ninety-nine, I'm sorry.
Right.
Okay.
Thirty-one thousand.
It's still under, it still puts pressure on people if that's the goal.
It'd be thirty-one, yeah.
Yeah.
Ninety-nine or a hundred to an oh.
Okay. So that line goes to a hundred K. Okay. That's not helping us.
When you, when you do your vote, that's when you would change, will change that number?
Yeah.
Well, we can, we can make that, that makes the new bottom line, uh, one seventy-one, three sixty, is that correct?
You're not changing the overtime line?
No, I think he was more concerned about the idea of putting it in for the materials and stuff, right?
Materials are...
Right. He's, he wants to raise fifty-three eighty-five from sixty-nine thousand to a hundred thousand, which is a thirty-one thousand dollar increase. So that should take the one forty-three sixty to one seventy-one three sixty. So I need to mark that on my colored sheet.
Okay, one seventy-one three sixty.
So that we make the right changes there. Where's my color? Public Works. Public Works, Winter.
Are they going to operating supplies at that point? Fifty-three hundred line?
Yeah, we're going to the fifty-three hundred line. I go, um...
Three eighty-five?
No, 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 it's not three oh five, it's, um, oh, you rolled all of Public Works.
Yeah, it's fifty-three eighty-five on the line.
We're gonna be voting on just the fifty-three hundred, right?
Broken down in the chart here.
Right.
It's on the, it's Winter.
Yeah, but when we did the colored sheets, I don't think we, did we...
Yeah.
Oh, Winter Works. Oh, next page, got it. Fifty-three hundred. So that eighty-one will go up by thirty-one thousand. This will go to one twelve.
My pages are out of order. That's helpful.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Okay.
Go back to the beginning. The auditing fees, do we have reason to believe that they are going up this year from the sixteen eight?
We, the...
Six.
Money that you see there, it hasn't been expended yet.
Okay.
Is, is expended before the year ends, because they are coming in next week, I think.
Right. Mike? Mike, Doc's gonna...
Yes.
A couple of questions. Rental of equipment, going back to Public Works, four thousand is budgeted. What do we rent? And only twenty-five hundred has been expended.
We rent bucket loaders, or a bucket truck, uh, to another bucket truck, but what's it called? A?
Man lift?
No. Man lift, it's not called that.
Uh, tree removal and replacement, nine thousand dollars, a little under two hundred, two thousand dollars is spent. Do we need that much in the budget?
Well, again, that's something that we can't predict. If we have trees down, and some trees our people don't take down, we hire somebody to do it for us, because we don't have the equipment.
Gas, ten thousand dollars in Public Works. How many people using their own vehicles to...
That's not for people using, that's for our trucks, all the pickup trucks, all the...
For they're in the neighborhood of town, or?
No, that's what we pay by fuel for all our vehicles.
Public Works?
Oh, fuel, yeah.
One thousand dollars for gas?
Yeah.
Steve, did you get an actual cost for health insurance yet? I know that that was kind of in limbo, and I don't...
Um, no, I haven't. We, um, we have the cost if, if we were to switch insurances, but we have not got a commitment from the unions yet on that. And Roger and I talked about that today. We, we heard...
You have commitment from the non-union, right?
They don't have a choice. We, we make a decision based on...
Okay, so that's already baked into your number?
No, it hasn't been.
Has to be all or nothing, right? I mean, it's a switch.
MMA.
No, doesn't have to be all or nothing. You could put the non-union on one plan and...
I spoke to MMA today, they were in the office, and, um, there's a lot of unanswered questions from them yet. But right now, I've plugged in what we, our cost would be with everybody staying on the same plan. I'm hoping, uh, the Public Works has already, their representatives thought that they would buy into this plan. We have not heard from the other unions whether that's gonna be, we've called and asked, and we haven't heard, so it'd be nice to do that before we commit taxes. I can come back and tell you that we're gonna drop that by twenty thousand, but right now, I can't, we've got contractual issues.
Has Rogers been successful in working on the workers' comp issue? Those charges that were on that, we're trying to get a...
Yeah, he's, well, he, Roger hasn't been really working on that. Our insurance agent has...
Rogers.
Oh, Roger Rogers. Too many Rogers. Um, we are following up on that, but we have not been able to budge the board, the Workman's Comp Board.
I know that you've spoke to this a little bit in the past, and I don't mean to sound like I'm beating a dead horse, but are we doing some aggressive work towards decreasing that mod rate? You know, like, safety programs?
Yep, our safety, head of our safety department is right here in the audience, and, uh, ongoing training, ongoing education.
The employee assistance program, is that a fee for service?
Yes.
Or is that a flat fee? So that amount...
It's a flat fee, so they get so many visits. It's with, uh, St. Mary's.
Is that, I know it's a small amount, but has that been shopped? Like, Maine General Hospital has an EAP program. That's pretty reasonable.
I, I could shop it out. I haven't, haven't.
Nothing happened to this line significantly, but, um, actually, it did happen to this line. Let me rephrase that. The amount for the retirement has gone up this year. Of course, we've had some long-term employees retire, so is that the amount that we're gonna have going forward?
Going forward. That's, that was a change in their plan. I mean, not that we changed it, it's just how they structured the fees. So the employer and the employees are paying more into it.
Okay. You guys can talk anytime.
I know, I'm waiting for you. I didn't want to show if you were done yet.
Go ahead, I'm just kinda looking down through it. I had notes to sell here.
One of the things that I've looked at, and again, going over the last couple years' budgets, is every year we come into this process saying that we've gotta try to keep the budget flat and not reduce services. And unfortunately, what we've done over the last few years, we're at the point now where we have to cut services and raise the budget. So I mean, we're seeing it with the school, unfortunately, and they did the best they could, and I think we've actually, and this year, there's, there's gonna be a reduction in services. I mean, it's not a department that's not gonna be working with less people, and we're actually raising taxes to balance that off, so it's kind of a lose-lose year. So, I mean, unfortunately, you try to cut, balance that off, and I don't think there's any easy or perfect solution. But I think, I mean, if you look, I mean, I, I agree, Roger, with what you're saying, the idea where people put you in to try to, to try to keep the budget reasonable. But I think if you look, that the police budget was cut this year. We are, we do have less services. Some of them don't look cut because of the increase in salaries, but if you didn't cut it, the increased salaries would've been a lot more. And I think that's something you see all the way across the board. I mean, anytime things get more expensive, when you start reducing to try to maintain it being somewhat close to saying, like we did this year, it doesn't always show at the end of the day that the budget is drastically less, but if we hadn't made those changes, it would've been drastically a lot more. And that's, I mean, that's one of the things that we have to explain. But in this year, going and getting out of the budget, now, we're actually having a reduction in services. There's any way you go about it, whether it's Public Works, the library, or the police department, and we're actually paying more. And it's really hard to balance that out. It's a possible balance out. You just gotta try to find the happy medium.
What are we gonna do next year when those, when the state cuts us another big hunk?
Well, I guess that next year, we're gonna have to try to balance it out again. There's gonna be a reduction in services and more taxes. I mean, that's, that's a balance you play every year. I mean, it's, there's no, there's no simple solution, unfortunately. You only can cut so much. We've been actually cutting services, every year we come in saying that we're not gonna reduce our services, but we've been cutting services for the last three years, so eventually it's gonna start being seen by the public. I mean, they're gonna, whether or not, you know, they don't have their street plowed right off, because Button only has so many people, or they get a call from the police, and unfortunately, that one person on duty is somewheres else and they can't come. Or, I mean, it's, unfortunately, you cut services to the point where a person goes to the library and it's not open, because they only have so many people go around. I mean, eventually, you only can cut services so much, and then people start to see it. We've been cutting services in a way that people really haven't been impacted yet. I mean, pretty soon it will be. I mean, and that's the thing we gotta balance out, and if next year it gets worse, well, unfortunate people are gonna have to understand, next year our decisions are gonna be tougher, and unfortunately, we're gonna lose, and they're gonna pay. You hate to pay more for less, but unfortunately, that's the world right now, unfortunately.
I also wanna reiterate what I asked Mike to say for me a few weeks ago, is that our debt service load has increased by two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand... our debt service load has increased by two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, almost forty-three percent. So, you know, that was something that the voters themselves agreed to, and, and so that increases the debt load. So that, you know, puts an additional two hundred thousand plus on what we're trying to figure out with the budgeting. So, meanwhile, it sounds like I'm sitting here picking apart nickels and dimes. I mean, I'm trying to see if there's any place that we can affect a change, but there was two hundred and twenty-eight thousand that, in addition to the revenue sharing loss, if you will, that we got from the state that we're having to make up for. And actually, next year could be another difference, is we're only going through and doing the land valuations this year. They may not get to all of it, or hopefully they'll get to all of it. But, you know, there could be other things that will happen next year to make a difference there, so.
Hire a few more cops, that's all. Any other?
I think there was anything significant, no.
Anything else? God?
Just, just to say what we already were saying earlier tonight, that line that, that keeps being brought up in Public Works Winter about not having enough money in it. You know and I know that we all discussed it tonight.
Yep.
I think, I can't speak to the whole board, but I think that we should probably come in at least closer to reality on that thing than we have in the past. So, that's fine.
Can you adjust it?
Anybody else got anything?
Just, this is not a budget that I would even come close to voting for. To me, it's a complete, total insult to the people of the town. Every year, we say we're not going to go into our designated funds. We're digging into them again this year. In fact, last year, the comment was made that if we don't, if we have to dig into our designated fund, we're going to make changes. We're backing it again this year.
Again, I would assert, though, that the budget difference is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And of that, a hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight was an increase in debt service. So we actually-
Absolutely was.
Have cut overall thirty-three thousand dollars. And that's not something that we, as the council, did. I mean, we cut the, the thirty-three thousand dollars, but we didn't, you know, put two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars additional into the budget. I mean, and I'm certainly willing to listen to any recommendations if there's other lines that people want to discuss. I'm open to hear it, but-
Well, there's, there's a lot of things that we could open and discuss, but it's, it's, it's not going to go anywhere. I think ninety thousand dollars a year just in overtime and the police department is completely ludicrous. But evidently, everybody else feels it's good and then they're going to keep it in there.
But one of the things that we've gone over in the past, Roger-
I know.
And, and the idea is, if you, to keep people on the streets, I mean, there's X amount of hours, I mean, days in a week, there's X amount of hours in the days. So when you take off full-time people, that means you got to make up the difference with other people working extra time. So the more regular people you take off the payroll, the more overtime you're going to pay. I mean, it's, it's one of those things where, I mean, if you're only going to have patrol people on twenty-two hours out of the day, I mean, but to have twenty-four hour service seven days a week, you have X amount of people. And when you get rid of your full-time people, that means someone else has to take the shift. It means they're paying overtime. So I mean, it's, it's a balance that you have to play out. I mean, unfortunately, if you hired three more people, you probably wouldn't have to be in overtime. But unfortunately, when you start taking people out, I mean, the hours don't go away. You're still going to cover them.
But do we need the coverage that we have in this little town?
I think people would be disappointed if we didn't have the coverage that we've been maintaining for the last dozens of years. I mean, that's, I mean, unfortunately, we have, we have a, a police department that's, that I think any town would want to have. I'd hate to think that I was the person responsible for the person that took that away. We've actually reduced it. I mean, over the last three or four years, every year that I've sat here, we've reduced the police. You know, eventually, like I say, eventually it's going to get to the point where we're going to have a reduction in services. You know, it's, right now, I don't think there's a person in town that when they call 911 doesn't expect someone to be there within minutes. I mean, eventually, it gets to the point where it'd be like Durham, where it's, say, forty-five minutes an hour, you should have someone there. Well, unfortunately, I don't think people in town would want, you know, I mean, if they're working to see any difference in their taxes, wouldn't want that difference in service. I mean, that's, that's the biggest thing. And unfortunately, you would have to drop this, this budget drastic for people to see a big reductions in taxes. I mean, if, if you're going to pay less and get less, I mean, that's one thing. But if you're not going to pay any less and you're going to get less, then that's, that's a problem. So, again, that's one of the concerns I had is the idea, at what point do you reduce services? A point where it's not really, you know, serving the people that voted us in?
I think the only way that you could rectify that overtime line, to make it disappear so people don't get so upset about seeing ninety thousand dollars in overtime, is to hire a full-time officer and a part-timer per diem officer to, to get rid of that money. I mean, that, so you're, you're going to shift that money from the overtime line to direct wages?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is that what you're asserting that you'd like to do?
No, I'm just-
Because I'm sure the chief would like to hire somebody else and get rid of that line.
No, I'd like to cut the size of it. Why do we need so many police officers? The people in this town have spoken over and over and over. Everybody in this panel knows that. Everybody has heard it.
I, and I understand what you're saying-
Nobody wants to work with me.
I understand what you're saying, Roger, but I'm, I'm going to suggest that none of them come to the public hearings.
No, they don't.
And I'm going to suggest, even when we were a selectman former government and had town meetings, none of the police department's budgets, or the fire department's budgets, or the emergency services budgets, none of those services were ever an issuer of debate with the townspeople in any of those venues. Right?
Wonder why?
Don't know. They've all had the chance to voice their opinions and to talk about it. Right? I mean, we've seen the information. We've looked at statistical information. We've seen that our per capita basis, based on the state average, is under, right, what the state recommends. Right? I mean, I don't know what else to provide you or tell you or anybody else. I mean, they haven't discussed it with us. Right? I mean, they didn't come and talk to us about it. And like I said, even when it was town meeting former government, they voted to keep all that stuff in.
Hey, Mike?
John?
One point I think is significant is I've heard a couple people say, there's no crime in this town. Okay, granted, there is very little crime in this town. Could it be that the reason there's no crime is because we have the size force we do and it's so effective? And if we start cutting that down, crime will go up. It's a lose-lose situation. If you want to cut people back, crime's going to go up and then you're going to have even more complaints. You can't win either way.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that is very true. I mean, the more you cut back, the more it's going to go up. I mean, because then you start to spread the news that, hey, we can all come to Lisbon and get things and do and get away with stuff. Right? I mean, right now, I mean, you talk to people in the other surrounding communities, they don't want to be in Lisbon. They don't want to drive through Lisbon. They don't want to, you know, drive from a bar through Lisbon or whatever, right? Because they know that we police our town. And we take care of our citizens. And we take, protect them. We have, you know, we clean all our calls. We have the best record in those areas. I mean, we've seen all the data. So I would, I would agree with you, John. Any other areas from council? So we're going to have a meeting next Tuesday and we're going to start to vote.
Just for clarification, we're doing the budget bottom line by budget bottom line or just doing the whole?
You know those colored sheets that we passed out, right? We're going to go through each one of those and we're going to vote on each one of those and say yea or nay. And we'll make the adjustment to the winter one as we go through it. Please remind me if I forget.
All right, I will.
And, and then after that's all done, then we'll vote on the overall budget, because that's a charter requirement as well. Okay? All right. With that, we'll close the meeting and we'll see you next Tuesday. Thank you.